It will guide you and that God, the Father, will open the right door for you as you transition to the next phase of your public life. This is my prayer for you, the council, and the people of Fresno through Christ our Lord. Amen.
Face the flag, ready, fill in. I pledge the deed.
Okay folks, are there any changes to the agenda?
I have a change to the agenda. Item 3A, file number ID 16251, which is a bill for introduction amending the municipal code section 2 dash 603 relating to posting legal notices, is being removed from the agenda by Councilmember Soria.
That was 3A as in Apple?
3A, mhm. And that's the only change I have.
Thank you very much. Okay, is there a motion to approve the agenda? Motion by Member Soria, second by Member Brandau. All those in favor? Those that oppose? Passes 60 with Member Olivier absent. Okay, let's move on to the minutes. Are there any changes to the minutes of February 25th? Member Brandau. Next item, okay, thank you. Any changes to the minutes, Madam Clerk?
Changes?
No changes. Is there a motion to approve the minutes? Motion by Member Brandau, second by me. All those in favor? Opposed? Passes 60 with Member Olivier absent. Now, council member reports and comments. Member Brandau.
Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to report a real successful event last Wednesday to support the blue, 10K run and 5K walk in, at Woodward Park. And yourself, and myself, and Councilman Brand were there. The three of us began the walk and Councilman Brand and I finished the walk. And we had, we had a great time out there to support our local law enforcement. And I think there were about 500 people that were either walking or running. And they, one of the things they did is we're wrapping a couple city buses with a rap that talks about supporting the blue and they had two of those buses on end and they looked beautiful. So I think it's going to be a great project.
Thank you very much. Uh, Member Soria?
Thank you, Council President. Just wanted to report on two events that I attended. One was the Naleo National Policy Institute on Energy Conference in Long Beach this last week on Friday. And it was a great conference to learn about how local municipalities can embrace the issue of clean energy and what we can do to improve and work with our business community. So I look forward to do more on this issue and hopefully see the city of Fresno being a leader on, on this issue as well. The other thing that I also wanted to say that was a successful event was this past, what is it, Tuesday, we hosted the mayor and deputy mayor from Chateau-Roue, France. They're our newest sister city. We had about 125 people come here to City Hall to the reception. Want to thank everyone that was able to come out and greet the dignitaries and show the support for this new partnership. And so it was a very successful event. Thank you.
Thank you. Screen is clear. A few things I did this past week was to, it was an honor for me to attend the enrobing ceremony of our newest member to the Fresno County Judicial Bench, and that was Mark Cullers. He's a former U.S. Attorney and a great addition to the Fresno County Judges. Also, we had the annual Neighborhood Watch Dinner honoring people from the Police Department, from the officers to the staff. And we really appreciated the event. It was a great opportunity to see all these people, hear about the stories that they engage in every day to protect the citizens of Fresno. Yesterday was a, was a very important day for Fresno. It was a bittersweet pill. We lost Colonel Clay Garrison from the 144th Air Wing. However, Sacramento gained a Brigadier General. So he was promoted to Brigadier General, that's a one-star general. And it was quite an event. It was well-attended by many, many dignitaries and we wish him the best of luck in his new, his new role as a general in the Air National Guard. And most importantly, congratulations to Tommy, his staff, everyone at the city for the great job they did at yesterday's Recharge Fresno. Renee and Bruce were there and many of the council members. It was just a wonderful event. It was great to see, as I said yesterday, music to our ears. We saw probably 15 pieces of heavy equipment, fully operational, preparing that site for our surface water treatment plant that's coming soon. Uh, the only thing I forgot to mention was it brought, it's going to bring a ton of jobs to our community, from the planning to the construction to the actual use of that facility. And Fresno will have water for many, many generations as a result of this project. So thanks to all my colleagues for being there and the city staff. And as I said yesterday, all the employees of the city of Fresno and those that have been employed to help implement that surface water treatment plant. So it was, it was a great day yesterday. Okay, Councilmember Brand.
Thank you, Council President. Just to restate, Member Brandau and I did go to the Support Our Blue event at Woodward Park. And I will confirm that one of our colleagues did not quite make the entire walk, but we don't mention names though. And also, just to reinforce what happened yesterday and how significant it was, the opening of that surface water treatment plant. And I remember here, late nights debating, sometimes acrimoniously with people in the audience, on a few people, but we prevailed on that. And I think it was a great thing for the city of Fresno to finally, after, God, how many decades of, of not doing, even kicking the can down the road. And I'm proud of everybody here in the council that was part of that. Thank you.
Thank you. City Manager Rudd.
Yes, Council, and I just wanted to kind of chime in or echo the sentiments that both you and, and Councilmember Brand have shared. As Tommy pointed out to us yesterday, the discussion or the need to take advantage of that resource that is available to the city that isn't, not available to very few cities within the San Joaquin Valley, let alone the state. And that's 180,000 acre feet behind the Kings and on the San Joaquin. And the conversation that occurred back in 1956, 57, about taking steps to capture that resource, and it took us that long to get where we were yesterday. We spent a lot of nights, a lot of time, either in this building or outside this building, listening to the community. It was a long, drawn-out process, interestingly enough. Other cities do the same thing and doesn't seem to catch anybody's attention, but we're Fresno and we're a little bit different. But I want to, again, as I said yesterday, applaud your leadership and your vision and more importantly, your courage to do, as you said, Council President, to stop kicking the can down the road. And history will look back at this council and this mayor and go, finally, they stopped kicking cans. We also have a great event scheduled for later on today, which is another example of your courage and your leadership and your willingness to stop kicking cans. So I want to again reiterate my comments yesterday. Thank you for your leadership. Thank you for your support on this, on both these projects. And the next two, yesterday and today are going to be some fascinating events and it'll be interesting to see how history looks back at the decisions that are being made, that were already made and the fact that that leadership and that vision actually have become, and taking it, let me back up, the willingness to see it through to its fruition. And today's the day where that vision and that leadership, as well as yesterday, have become realities. So, thank you again.
Thank you. I just would add that at yesterday's event, we had representatives from the federal government as well as Sacramento. And they said over and over that Fresno is on the cutting edge of this water crisis and resolving this water crisis. And it was repeated often and it was quite exhilarating for us as council members and the mayor and staff to hear those kinds of words of encouragement. Fresno is a great city and we will be well-prepared for our future, thanks to all the hard work of this, this body and the administration, as well as the city employees of Fresno. Okay, let's move on to the consent calendar. Would any member like to pull an item for discussion at 11:00 a.m. this morning off the consent calendar? There's only four items that I see. Member Soria?
Um, yes, can I pull 1B?
1B as in boy?
Yes.
Anyone else? That will be discussed at 11:00 a.m. this morning. Do I, takes us out to the public? Anyone in our community wish to come forward and speak on any item on the consent calendar? If so, please come forward, give us your name and address and the form is yours. Seeing, seeing none, we will bring it back to here. Is there any comments by council? Seeing none. I have a motion by Member Baines. Thank you, sir. Do I have a second? Second by Member Olivier. Thank you. All those in favor? Passes 70. Thank you very much. Now we're going to the next item of business, which will be general administration. Next is item 2A, Kids Moving and Central Unified Staff. Please come forward and give us your presentation. Good morning.
Morning, Mr. President, members of the council. Emmanuel Molinero, the Director of the Parks Department. I'm here today asking or recommending that council approves a services contract with Kids Moving, Inc., subject to approval by the City Attorney's Office, and approve terms of a joint use agreement with Central Unified School District. This agreement, excuse me, this service contract with Kids, Inc., is part of the mayor's commitment to providing park and open space for all of the residents of Fresno. This contract will open up 16 schools for community use on Saturdays and Sundays. The hours of operation will be from 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Kids, Inc. will provide supervised areas and allow the community to access these facilities during these hours for open recreation. They will also provide supervised recreation programs, also provide nutrition programs, and provide physical fitness programs for children and adults that wish to participate, you know, in these programs. With us today are representative, representatives from Kids, Inc. over here, if you care to ask them any questions. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you very much. Would any member of the public like to come forward and address this particular issue? Anyone in the public, our community? Okay, bring it back here. Councilmember Brandau.
Thank you. Council President, I'd like to call up the folks from Kids, Inc. I have a couple questions for them. Is that okay, Emmanuel?
Oh, sure.
All right, thank you. How are you guys doing? Could you give us your names?
Tammy Phillips, the CEO.
Right on.
Brian Simpson, Chairman of the Board.
Thanks, Brian. Thanks, Tammy. So, could you tell me a little bit about what you're going to be providing for the kids and people on these, I guess 16 campuses, is that right?
Correct.
Okay.
We, with Kids Moving Incorporated, our focus is on programs. And so we're very, very excited to be partnering with the city to not only have the green space open for the community, but also to be able to provide those structured programs. Our programs are basically physical activities. So like he was saying, everything from fitness to recreational to sports leagues that are more intramural style, not competitive style. So we want to involve the entire community and make it programs that are accessible for all ages, all abilities, everyone from, from all aspects. So every site will roll out with programs and then we will also be working individually with the communities on each site to cater those programs to their individual needs. Whatever their interests are, we will always be working directly with their needs and their desires to make those programs continue to be successful. And so we're, we're working on increasing physical fitness and physical activity, but also bringing that relational component for families to be able to be active together and really build that camaraderie in the, in the communities through the programs.
Well, and it was Tammy?
Tammy.
Tammy, so, um, so you guys get out there and set up the sports fields ahead of time and do all of the physical, get everything ready?
Right. So the trainers that we will be hiring to do these, these will be trained and certified in four different areas. They'll be trained in fitness, in recreation, in sports, and in nutrition and health. And they will be providing those programs and have, like you said, have everything set up. We'll be really doing a lot of background work and a lot of tracking of attendance and making sure that we're really keeping track of the success of the program and then always adapting that program to the, to the needs as they, as they grow.
And then, and so you really led right into what I wanted to ask about. So you need to hire the staff?
Exactly.
To do this, right?
Mhm, correct.
So do you rely strictly on the monies coming from this contract or are there grants? Do you guys also apply to grant for grants and stuff like that?
For this particular project, the funding would come specifically for this project.
From this, what we're voting on today?
Yes.
Okay. And, but you're pretty secure in the game plan that you have for the number of personnel?
Yes.
The reason I'm asking Tammy is we've had, we've gone out to third-party groups to run things for us before and then we find out after the fact they don't have the horsepower. They can't pull it off.
Right, right. We are currently implementing programs similar to this in West Fresno Elementary School. And we have a staff of about 10 coaches out there right now, six to 10, 10 full-time coaches. And then we're doing these programs that we're talking about now. So that's been our pilot program. So if you want to look at, you know, we have the No Walls Gym. I don't know if you've seen that. That's been in the news lately. So the No Walls Gym is our fitness program and that's been rolled out at West Fresno Elementary and West Fresno Middle School and American Union. And then we also have the, our PE staff that's on campus now have been doing our recreation games and activities for about two years now on that campus. So we have the expertise, we have the programs. I think that oftentimes the importance of the training that hap, that needs to happen prior to putting these programs in is what's overlooked and doing the, the real hard work before the rollout is what's super important. And so we're going to be spending many, many hours in training with all of our coaches and, and really have a lot, we, we reviewed our policies that we're going to need to put this together. And we will have so many policies and procedures that they follow that the nuts and bolts of the program, I think, are what really lead to its success. And that's the background work that we've been doing basically for the last 10 years and specifically for the last two years that I think enable us to be able to come to this moment in time and be completely prepared for this project.
And now, so you mentioned the last 10 years. So what is the closest project? I mean, this is a pretty, this is a pretty big project, right?
It's a big project. Thank you for acknowledging that.
Right, right. I mean, it's big.
It's a very big project.
16 campuses.
It's a big project.
So like what is, so, and you have the experience. Tell us about some of the things that you've done that would be similar to this.
Okay. Yeah, it's interesting because I feel like everything that I've done in my past has kind of culminated to this moment. And it's interesting when you look back on your past experiences, how that sort of happens. It's, you know, so I have a background in fitness, which is what I started back in the 1980s in the fitness industry. And then I got into physical education through teaching at Fresno State. I teach in the kinesiology department there. I have a master's degree in kinesiology. And so my fitness background and then merging that with my physical education background has led to the development of all of these things. So I developed about 10 years ago, a physical education curriculum program that is standards-based, has thousands and thousands and thousands of games and activities that are all based on certain principles. Those principles basically go towards making sure that every player feels successful when they play in a program. So the adaptability of the program, the, the types of activities that go into that program are all based on not only the standards, but on making sure every individual feels successful when they participate. So then we, we merge that with the fitness and how do we make each activity vigorous and health-enhancing? And then add that to, what's the problem with health clubs? What's the problem with physical education? Why are people not being successful? And then looking at the relational component, looking at what makes a person feel successful? Why aren't gym memberships working? And so the concept of No Walls Gym is really the un-gym. It's really, everything that doesn't work with a health club can work, but the reasons why people don't like to work out in health clubs is because they feel intimidated. They don't know what to do when they get there. You know, you have all this equipment, but what do you do with it? So not everyone needs to pay $100 an hour for a personal trainer. You know, let's, let's be real, it's not rocket science. All we really need to do is move. And there's no reason in the world why people should have to feel like they need a personal trainer to get themselves healthier. So by being able to offer free programs for communities who don't have gym access, who don't have the ability to go out and walk in the streets, I think it's just an, an amazing opportunity for community members to be able to get out there, move in someplace they feel safe, to be able to instill these play values with their kids and to come someplace to engage and play with their families and to strengthen their family bond while they're strengthening their bodies. I think it's just an amazing opportunity for us, for the community.
And that sounds fantastic. What, so have you guys done a campus situation like this before?
It's, it's basically what we're doing in West Fresno. But we do it during the week. So the only difference is we'll be on the weekends instead of during the week.
On weekends, okay, cool. Hey, thanks Tammy, I appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
And thanks Brian.
We're so excited.
One of my colleagues might call you back up, but we, I appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Emmanuel, I wanted to ask you a couple of questions.
Yes, Councilmember?
So Emmanuel, I, after hearing from Kids, Inc., they're going to do the programming and the security, that's something that, that your department does or who kind of?
No, we will not be providing security. We, we have been, there will be, we will be bringing on an individual once the program starts to assist and help supervise the program and also work with the school district to make sure that Kids, Inc. is fulfilling, you know, the commitment that they've made to not only the city, but also to the schools. But it's just going to be more in an advisory capacity. If a situation does occur on the parks, I mean, in the schools, you know, the, this organization would need to call the services of the police department.
Oh, okay. And then, so if somebody's just hearing about this for the first time, it's fantastic that we're opening up schools, we're, we're actually partnering with schools to open them up on weekends for kids to play at, where they previously weren't allowed to play at a lot of these schools. So that's all fantastic. So if people are hearing about this for the first time, what is the city of Fresno's role and what, so do the school become treated just like one of, one of our parks?
Uh, no, the, the schools are actually making their campuses available for, for the community. As you know, in the past, what was occurring was, you know, you had these green spaces that were fenced off and the community was not allowed, you know, to access them. Now with, you know, with this organization coming in, those campuses on the weekends from 9:00 to 6:00 p.m. will now be open. So the community, community groups can use the outdoor areas. They are not going to be allowed to use the indoor facilities, but they will be out, allowed to use the outdoor space. You know, as you know, the city of Fresno really has a very serious park shortage or green space shortage throughout this community. This is going to help us to address that, that severe problem.
Okay.
In addition to that, in addition to just having the open green space available to the community for just drop-in, this organization is also going to be providing structured programs for those people that choose to participate. So if a youngster wants to participate in one of the intramiller, one of their sports leagues wants to participate in the nutrition program, you know, they can register for the program. They're going to have staff there to teach them these different types of offerings.
And then Emmanuel, do you think, because when I go to parks and, and so there's, I guess, a difference because they're schools, so they're used to attracting children. But when I go to a parks, I don't see a lot of organized activities at the parks I go to. But maybe at some of the school campuses, these activities will really take off. At others, maybe they might, they might not. So how is that going to work?
If, if the programs that are being offered at a, at a certain campus don't resonate with the community, attendance isn't what is expected, the, the way this is structured, we have enough flexibility so that we can work with the school district and move the program to another school site. Regarding my department's programs, most of the parks that we, the majority of the parks that we have are just passive green space areas open to the community. But we do have a number of parks that are very intensely programmed. I mean, one, for example, Quigley over in Councilwoman Soria's district is very, very highly programmed. We get a lot of attendance. Ted C. Wells is another park like that. Holmes unfortunately, in the last couple of months, has, has seen our attendance dramatically drop because the facility has been closed because we're doing some major renovation inside the building. But depending on the type of facility, some, some of our recreation facilities are extremely well-used. The open space, green space parks, it's more of a drop-in area for the community.
All right, all right. Thank you, Emmanuel.
You're welcome.
I really appreciate it.
Any other questions?
Okay. Very good. Member Soria?
Thank you, Council President. I have a few comments and then questions as well. I'm excited about joint news. And I was, I'm a supporter from the very beginning when the administration decided to take the issue on and I participated in the press conference. So I'm excited to see it come before us. But I do have a couple of questions because it wasn't clear on the staff report. And this is something that I always ask when we go out to RFP process, please include the information of all the other folks that submitted a bid. I know that you guys had one other, but we didn't get that information, at least to know who was the second submittal. I know that you guys are recommending Kids Moving, Inc. as the awardee, but I would encourage you guys, and I think you guys pretty much are consistent with it, but not in this staff report. It wasn't included. Just to know who else, because I know you guys said we had one additional RFP. The other thing that I, and I think my colleague covered it in terms of the role of parks, because in the staff report, it doesn't really tell us what the role of parks is. So I want to make sure that there is, and I'm glad to have heard Emmanuel, that you say that there is going to be one additional staff. Is, is that what I'm hearing from you? That is going to be charged with kind of monitoring? Because it is a big grant. It's almost a million dollars. And I want to make sure that the dollars that we are putting and investing towards this, you know, are monitored from our end so that, one, we know that they're being spent the way that they, they are being told that they're going to be, be spent. And then, two, that the relationships with the school administrators or the folks that we're coordinating, that we also build that relationship. Because if Kids Moving, Inc. only serves with us for one year, that our Parks Department is connected to the people that have been part of it. And that's important to me. If we, if we are seriously committed to making sure that this model works, that Parks is intimately involved, that, that would be kind of, in terms of the oversight and the relationships being built with whoever it is at the, at the schools and, and so forth. So just to, again, clarify, so there is going to be one person from our staff?
We are going, we are looking at hiring one supervisor to monitor this program who will actually be out there on Saturdays and Sundays. It's not to base, to oversee the program, it's to assist, it's to assist the programmers in making sure, you know, that they're fulfilling their commitment, but also act as a bridge with the school district. Because, is, most of you probably know that you have a superintendent that oversees a school district, but it's the principals that really control their campuses. And this individual would not only work with, you know, with this organization, but also, you know, with the school principal to make sure that the, that the program is satisfactory to the principal and that it is effective for the community. to the principal, and that it is effective for the community. So that's what we envision as far as our role in working, you know, with Kids Inc.
Perfect. I have a couple other questions. So I know that, Manuel, I have a couple other questions, sorry. I know that the joint use will now open the space, and a lot of the activities are going to be organized, sports and so forth. So what if a family just wants to use the school, but they don't want to participate in the organized sports or the organized activities? Are they going to be able to come onto the campus and just lounge around, or have a picnic, have their kids run around while the organization is there doing the organizing of the, or during the organized sports or activities?
That was an issue that I was concerned about. That issue is being addressed, it is open. The campuses are, I believe I mentioned that in my opening comments, the campuses are going to be open for just drop-in play. If a family wants to come in and maybe have a picnic on a Sunday afternoon and not participate in the organized structured programs, they can. If there's a, you know, a sports league that already operates within the community that needs field space, and the fields are, you know, the fields will be available for community, just general community use. If people choose to participate in a program, a child chooses to participate in a program, you know, then they can register for the program and take the program. But yes, there's going to be, the campuses are going to be open for just drop-in.
Okay, perfect. And that's something that's important to me, because I want to make sure that if there's families in my district that want to just drop in and have their kids run around on the campus, that they do have the opportunity without, you know, being required to participate in the organized sports or activities. And in terms of, I guess on that same issue, in terms of liability, is there a difference? And I don't know if it's the attorneys, or you could answer, but is there a difference in terms of liability for those folks that are just, that are not participating in any of the organized activity versus they're just drop-ins?
The city is taking on some of the liability, but not all of it. I'm not sure if we're allocating full responsibility to them for those who are not participating in the programs. Let me check on that.
The, if they're participating in a structured program, then there's a waiver, I believe, that they'll be asked to sign. If they're just coming, if a family's just, so that'll deal with if something happens during their participation in a structured program. If someone's just coming to the school, just to go play basketball, or just, you know, whatever they want to do in the green space, so frisbee's around. They're free to do that, and if something happens, then there's language in which the school district and the city will share in that liability. If it was something because the school district failed to maintain the grass or something, then that'd be shared, but if it's something because we failed to do something, then that will be on us. But that would not be a liability borne by the contractor, because those individuals were not participating at that time in a structured program, they're just using it as, you know, as any other passive green space.
So that'd likely be on the city or the school, depending on the circumstance for those drop-ins?
Yeah.
And today, we're not voting on the actual language on indemnification, I think, which is what you guys have been discussing with, or liability in terms of the agreements?
If you're talking about the joint use with Central Unified?
Huh?
Are you talking about the joint use with Central Unified?
Yeah.
The, we are very, 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 very close. I think we've got language that both of us are agreeable to, as far as the demnification. So what you are voting on today is the material terms and conditions of that agreement, and giving me authority to execute that agreement with the city attorney's approval, once we, so that they can, Central Unified can move forward with taking the item to the district meeting, which I think is scheduled for later on this month.
Okay.
Councilmember, the proposal right now places supervisory responsibility with Kids Moving for everybody at the site, whether they're participating in a program or not. We still need to work out all the details, but that's what the RFP says.
But then, so the details will be in terms of the liability and indemnification? I just want to make sure, I don't know, I feel like I'm kind of uncomfortable voting on something without seeing the final language, in terms of the indemnification, and that you guys are still kind of negotiating liability. I don't know, I don't know if my other council colleagues are comfortable enough voting without having that information in front of them, in terms of the finalizing, but I kind of, I have a legal background, and so without having the terms in front of me, I'm kind of hesitant to approve something that I don't know what you guys will, and I don't know, you say that it's going to be coming next month? Are we going to, is it going to come back to council so that we can see it?
So, so if we're getting, I think maybe, I'm confused, because there's two issues. As the city attorney pointed out, Kids Inc. will be out at the site supervising, so they're going to be responsible for what's going on. If a family is participating in one of their structured programs, then there's a waiver of any liability, so that will take care of them. If something happens while they're supervising outside of their control, then that's a shared liability between the district and the city, depending on what it is. For example, if it's just something happened out there, like any other park, which is we would own, in other words, something like, someone goes to play basketball, and they do what kids do sometimes, and they grab the hoop, and the basketball pole and backboard falls on top of them, because the base of the, and I'm, you know, the base of the basketball pole was rusted out, then there's going to be an argument as to who's responsible for that. If it was because somebody went out there and broke their ankle while they're doing that, but there's nothing wrong with the basketball, and there's a file, a claim filed, that's going to be on us, just like it would be any other park that we own. So I don't think there's any issue with who's responsible in risk, in assessment of risk with a structured program, it's between us and the school district. And when it comes to Central Unified, I'm, last meeting we had, we were with Superintendent Sutton, we were, we had language that I think we were both agreed to, and that we are, need to just finalize the whole contract, the joint use agreement, pardon me, the joint use agreement. But we are right there, I mean, so what we're asking you today is rather than go through the process, because I've made a commitment to you and to the mayor that I want this program up by April, is that approve the terms and conditions, including the indemnification, subject to the approval of the city attorney, who's going to make sure that we don't own too much of this, so that when it goes before the Central Unified Board later this month, we don't have to come back in April to then have it approved, and then lose another month and not be able to start this until May.
But isn't Central Unified, at least in my understanding, is not meeting until April on this issue? Because it's not on their next agenda. So even if we vote on it today, the programming won't happen until after Central Unified has agreed, correct?
Which would be, could be as early as April.
Well, they don't have a meeting until April, and this is not on their next agenda. So I guess in terms of trying to meet the deadline, I just want to make sure that, and I get the point with Kids Moving Inc., not in terms of the structured component, I just want to make sure that I'm able to see what the finalized language is, I guess, that's what.
The draft terms and conditions were in your council packet.
I get that, but the Central Unified still hasn't completely agreed, or even Fresno Unified, is that correct? We're going to finalize it maybe in their next?
It feels like we've got a lot more work with Fresno Unified. If it's council discretion, you know, we would recommend approval. Again, it's subject to the city attorney's, this is not unusual, we do this all the time. If Central Unified can't deal with this until April sometime, then you're absolutely right, then the program isn't going to get up and running.
So our approval would be subject to them approving?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. And then, I know that this is just related to Central Unified, but in terms of the agreement with Kids Moving Inc., if we vote on it today, does it mean that we're awarding the entire contract to Kids Moving Inc.? Is that, just so it's clear? Because they're going to be doing, servicing both Fresno Unified and Central Unified. One thing that I would suggest, because I know that we talked about seeing what are some of the needs in the neighborhood and going accordingly, I would like to come back in about six months after we first initiate the program, to kind of check in and see where the programming is, how the different sites are working out. I would like to actually have a personal check-in with you guys, with the schools that you guys are going to be, with the schools that you guys are going to be directing in my district, which I know is Fresno High. And I did want to mention with Fresno High, I know that there's been some concerns by a few individuals, because Fresno High is a smaller campus in comparison to some of the other high schools, and they actually have limited green space on their campus. And so, I'd like to kind of see and assess if that's going to be the perfect fit for that area. And I don't know, I know that you guys are going to be working through the agreement with them, but I did notice that you guys said that there's some flexibility with moving schools, to make sure that the families around that area also get the same, the similar, I guess, programming, or, yeah, to some of the other schools, because this school is smaller. It'll probably be a little bit more challenging to have some of the Saturday program, because I know that they use their fields on Saturdays. So, I guess being in conversations with the athletic director and seeing how much time that there is on the weekend to in fact do some of this programming at Fresno High School. So I'd really want to closely work with you guys on that, to make sure that if Fresno High's not the best fit, that we figure out what other school is going to be the best fit for that area. And additionally, I just wanted to say, for the Fresno Unified component, or the schools, the only school that will be, I guess, open would be Fresno High School. And I know that we've been, I've been working with you guys with Central Unified, and I appreciate that, and really being open when I approached you guys about incorporating Central Unified. And lo and behold, they've been the one, I guess, a little bit friendlier to work with on the issue, I will say, in terms of trying to finalize the contracts sooner. So I'm glad that we are incorporating Central Unified, I think it's going to be great. I did want to mention that District One is probably the district with the least amount of green space, if we look at, and so hopefully, in the near future, we can look at some other schools, some of the other, I don't know if it's, if middle school or another elementary school in my district, in terms of the Fresno Unified, so that the families in my district are able to also take advantage of these, the programming and also the open space. So those were all just my, the comments that I wanted to make, thank you.
Member Baines.
Thanks, Council President. Some of the line of questioning, my colleagues had, spread a question with me, I want to make sure we get it answered clearly. And I don't know if the question is for Manuel or Bruce, but Manuel, who is responsible for the oversight of this contract? Is it Parks?
Well, it will be the city, like a-
I mean, what department, though?
I believe it'll probably be my department working with the city manager's office.
Who's responsible, Bruce? Parks Department?
Parks.
Okay, doesn't sound like-
And I indicated, and I agree, he's going to be requesting an additional position to oversee and manage this contract, and probably this as well as our other CBO agreements.
Okay, so we're going to get an additional Park staff person specifically for oversight?
Yes, yes.
And this person, to address Councilwoman Soria's statement, this person would be the individual that would be working directly with, you know, the athletic directors on the campuses, especially the high schools, because there you can really get into some pretty dicey situations, especially with the coaches during their season. So we're sensitive to these kinds of issues, we have a lot of experience working with the high schools right now because of our jobs program. So our person would be working very closely with the high schools, as well as the elementary school principals.
How many sites would this person be responsible for overseeing?
Be responsible for overseeing all sixteen sites. And this person would be working Saturdays and Sundays.
Okay. So all sixteen sites between Central and Fresno Unified?
Correct.
As well as our CBOs that are operating in some of our facilities, or would?
I would, I mean, if we're bringing this person on, and this program right now is getting off the ground, my recommendation would be to keep this person solely focused on, you know, the Kids Inc. program, make sure that it's running smoothly. I would probably say right now that ninety-eight percent of the school sites will probably work very well. You may have some problems, this person will be focused on correcting the, any issues that may occur. Once things settle down, then the person could venture out and start working with the various CBOs.
Okay.
And again, even in our situation in Parks, some of our CBOs really need no oversight. I mean, they're doing an outstanding job. California Elm is an example. Other ones are weaker, and you'll probably end up devoting more time to the weaker ones to shore them up.
Okay. Alright. So, so I'm, again, happy that we are, you know, I share the same sentiment as Councilmembers Soria and Brandow, as far as being happy for this program to get off the ground. At the same time, obviously, we want to be careful, it's a lot of money, it's a lot of responsibility we have, and making sure that it's administered properly. And I don't think we've done this in the past, so we're kind of, you know, creating it on the fly, which is okay sometimes, but we got to be mindful. Bruce, when are we going to have this person on board for oversight? Because I'm going to make a motion in a moment, and just so you know, the motion's going to include, obviously, Councilmember Soria mentioned a six-month check-in, I think that that's an absolutely appropriate request. So my motion's going to include that, but I want to make sure that the person we have that's going to be monitoring this is not hired. I know sometimes we have a problem, you know, bringing people on board when we want to do it. So do we have the position, I mean, do we have the position available right now, or is it something that's going to have to wait until after budget?
What I'm looking at doing is taking a current vacant position and do what we call a conversion, or conversion of that position, and then when you see the budget this year, there'll be an amendment to the par that will flex the additional supervisor.
Okay, so, so you're talking about-
Yes, I can hire, I can get somebody on board within the next thirty to forty-five days.
Okay, because my thing is, is, okay, that's the good thing. I don't want to, I don't want us to wait until, you know, July, and then in September, we're back here. And we expect this person to have done an assessment of how these sites are doing in a couple of months, right? We want to be fair to that person. So I'll, I'll, you guys are looking at me funny, and he's growling over here, I don't know, that didn't, I'm making a motion. You want to, you guys want to continue it? Well, here's my motion. My motion is going to be a motion to accept staff's recommendation, with the understanding that we bring an oversight staff person on board within the next forty-five days, and a review of the, all of these contracts in the next six months. I think my motion dies for fail of a second.
Could you restate your motion? I'm sorry.
I'm making a motion to approve the item, but to hire an oversight person within forty-five days, and to bring the contract, to bring the contract back within six months for review, as Councilmember Soria requested.
Would a workshop also be in order in six months to update on progress?
Yeah, the, I would assume that the item probably would be a workshop, the review would be a workshop, yeah.
Yeah, I took that, is that, that was what the, ten of the motion was, is that in six months, we'll come back, the contractor will come back in six months and provide a workshop on the success of the programs, maybe challenges of the programs, how well they're doing, participation. There are a number of metrics in the contract for each site, level of participation, and they can easily report out based on those metrics that were in the RFP, and will be in the contract.
You know, I'll second your motion, Member Baines. Okay, the screen is clear.
Let's, let's take a vote on this. The vote is regarding the motion made by Member Baines. I don't know if anybody needs clarification, apparently not. Excuse me. All those, Member Soria?
Sorry, just have one question. In regards, so I know that we're looking at a 900 and something thousand agreement. What about the remainder? Because I know that we had approved 1.2.
The remainder is being used to provide janitorial services and some other things that most school districts have requested.
Okay. And then in your commitment to ensure that we have that additional person that in Parks to do the oversight, that's, you said it would be a vacant position that we would fill?
They probably have, they have vacancies within the department and what you, we do is that we take that position, we convert and then come back later on as far as the budget and amend the par. Because right now, if he doesn't have a vacant supervisor, we'll have to take an existing position that's vacant, convert to a supervisor. And then when the budget's adopted, formally include that in their FY '17 budget.
Okay. Thank you.
Council President, seeing as how there's still outstanding questions, I'm going to amend my motion to continue this until the March 21st meeting, I think we have a meeting on March 21st?
I'll still stay with my second.
Okay. So I'll make a motion that we continue until, so we can get some of these questions that my other two colleagues have worked out.
Okay, the motion by Member Baines to continue this matter, second by Member Lee Brand. And let's take a vote. All those in favor, indicate by aye. Simply continue the matter to satisfy inquiries by some of our colleagues here. All those in favor? Opposed? Passes 7-0. Thank you very much. Moving on to Item 2B as in Boy. Actions pertaining to groundwater monitoring and reporting for the Fresno Sanitary Landfill. This is citywide item, Public Utilities. Good morning.
Good morning, Council President, Council. Jerry Schuber, Department of Public Utilities. The item before you is the approval of a four-year agreement with CDM Smith for monitoring and reporting to the EPA on groundwater remediation at the Fresno Sanitary Landfill. Fresno Sanitary Landfill was, is the oldest sanitary landfill in the state of California. It was closed in late 80s and final cap and closed in 2000. Since that time, we have entered a decree with EPA to do Superfund cleanup site and we have been working with the EPA as well as with outside consultants to do water monitoring, gas monitoring and plume monitoring of that landfill since its closure. We have been reporting to the EPA for several years and we, we are hopeful that this will be part of a closure process that will actually get this landfill finally delisted from the EPA. So with this, with this final, or with this contract, we're expecting to have the final, or five tasks performed. We're going to have performance monitoring done for the next four years, groundwater remediation action and operations assistance, as well as reporting to the Environmental Protection Agency and meetings with them to continue our operations at the landfill, as well as Superfund delisting pathway, which we are hoping for, as I said, to remove that from the Superfund site. And then Phase Three Groundwater Remedial Action Evaluation and to also do project management on that site for the next four years. I am available for questions and the report is in front of you. So thank you very much.
Thank you for that concise presentation. Appreciate it. So anyone in our community that would like to come forward and comment on this item, please do so and give us your name and address. You'll have three minutes. Good morning, Barbara.
Good morning, sir. My name is Barbara Hunt. Not Barbara, Barbara.
Could you say it again?
Barba, B-A-R-B-A-R-A. Barba Hunt, that's my real name.
Okay.
Barbara is B-A-R-B-R-A. That is not my name. My real name is Barba. My mother knew what she was doing.
I think I'll stick with Ms. Hunt.
Thank you very much. On this item here, I was born over here. I'm 63, I'm 69 years old. My birthday, January 23rd, I was born on Willow Street. I watched this town grow. That sewage plant been over there for all those many years, that big old dump over there we got on that sewage plant ground. It got that big old thing and blew up that anthem and whatever that gas is, we pumps out to Central. When Martin McIntyre was up here, they told him up here, tell Barbara Hunt what you're drinking up here. He say recycling nation water. Why we gotta drink some recycled nation? I call it pee. Why we gotta drink some doggone pee when we got all this water and bubu floating around up in this water? We got all this water coming off of it. This been for years. You heard this gentleman talking about, this is the oldest of one of these plants, sewage plants that's here in the, in the, probably in the whole United States. And then they put a nuclear plant out there and I wondered if that's going to be, has been taken care of. We need somebody out there from Environment Protection Agency. We need the FBI out there. We need to see if any crime being committed because all those people, that's the oldest neighborhood that's in the city of Fresno, is out there on Walnut Church, California, which all them signs says east. I'm saying we need some help out there because that groundwater, I had my own well, it's probably was contaminated too with all that stuff and made me sick out in there. That whole area needed to be investigated. I never knew why Clovis had to send all their afterbirth and all their crap out here to us and we gotta drink all this water and stuff and Martin told them. And right here, Sal was up in here, tell Barbara what you drinking, recycling nation water. He walked over and told me, Ms. Hunt ought to beat you up. And I don't tell you what I told him setting up on this thing, but it was, it was real nice. Now what I'm saying is, all this got to be investigated in southwest Fresno and those signs says east, east out there, but the signs is incorrect because I got the paperwork here. The county prisoner turned their quarter mile, made that southeast Fresno and we really southwest. We need some help out there that drinking water. All that sewage stuff, all that stuff out there, all the farmers, everybody is throwing crap out there. And then they putting it around your house and telling them, we don't got, we don't have water, but we building more of these third world country sewage plants out here. Why we gotta drink that pee in the first place? Brown bubu coming, the water stank and putting on that chlorine and stuff and red bugs coming out from around your houses. Because they send those sewage lines is off there, no water for them red bugs and they coming up and they crawling all over everywhere out there. Something need to be done, that whole west side over there. We don't got any representation. It says we the people, not you the people. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public like to come forward and comment on this particular item? Seeing none, we'll go to Council Comments, Councilmember Baines. Motion to approve, do we have a second? I'll second it, the motion in a second. All those in favor? All those in favor? Thank you. Steve, are you guys in favor? We're taking a vote. Thank you. It passes 6-0 with Member Brand absent. Thank you very much. Next is Item 2C, a resolution approving construction program regarding to the Fulton Mall sponsored by Darm. Good morning, sir.
Good morning, Mr. Council President, members of the council. I'm Dan Zack, Assistant Director in the Development Resource Management Department. And I'm happy to be here this morning. This is an exciting day. We have a big event later today. And the item before you right now is related to the Fulton Mall reconstruction project. You know, once the, the street is improved, I think it's going to be a boon to everybody, but I've been through this before in a previous city that I worked in and it's uncomfortable during major construction like this. I think we all know that. And so I'm happy to be bringing this program to you this morning because I think it's going to help a lot during that, that period before the, the crowds come and the new street is opened up. I want to give credit to Lupe Perez of my staff who worked really hard on this program and wanted to be here today but had a family commitment and couldn't be here, so I'm happy to present this item for her. So for a little bit of background, on December 3rd, the construction contract was awarded to American Paving for the Fulton Mall reconstruction project. And during that meeting, council members urged staff to develop a construction impact assistant program of some sort, and so we got to work on it. City staff and the downtown partnership load several meetings with downtown merchants and property owners to see what was needed, what would be most helpful. We also looked at best practices across the country for similar projects. We're not the only one out there doing this sort of thing, and so we wanted to learn from others. And so that's how this program was developed. So what is being proposed would affect the area bounded by Merced to Enyo and from the alley between Van Ness and Fulton and the alley between Broadway and Fulton. So it would be all the, the buildings and businesses along Fulton itself that take their access from Fulton. It would last for 14 months, which would be the duration of construction. So it would, would go for the entire anticipated construction period. And there would be three benefits to businesses and properties along the construction zone to help, help them mitigate the impacts of the construction. The first one is two-hour free customer parking for all of the businesses along the mall. And that would be valid at the four garages in the area. So it'd be valid at the Spiral Garage, the Underground Garage, Garage Four, which is on Tulare Street, and Garage Nine, which is at Van Ness and Merced. So customers would get a validation coupon and then could redeem that when they leave the garage and not pay for those first two hours. Those validation coupons will be given to the merchants along Fulton Mall at no cost to them, and so it'll be a pretty big benefit to the businesses and the clientele. Second aspect of the program is waiving and reducing of various planning fees such as conditional use permits, development permits, sign permits, so that businesses that are expanding, remodeling, new businesses getting started in that area and want to get that going during the construction period, there'd be a big reduction in those fees and hopefully a bit of an incentive to keep those plans moving and, and keep businesses remodeling and expanding and coming in. And then finally, the last one would be a waiver of the business tax that the businesses along the mall would pay during the construction period. And so when they come in to get that business tax certificate, they would not have to pay the fee that goes with that. There are, and so those are the, the three aspects of this program. There, we're looking at other items too. There was, for example, suggestion that a relocation assistance program be looked at. We're still working on that, looking at options there. Facade improvement programs, for example, we're looking at that too. That's not part of what is being proposed today, but we're continuing to work on that. During construction, the businesses will remain open and accessible at all times and so, and there will be signage, direct people and walkways to each business. And so the contractor will be working on that. And then the downtown partnership will be working on promoting the area and the businesses during the, the construction period. They have an aggressive social media campaign planned out to make sure that everybody's aware that, hey, continue to go to those businesses, they're open and we'll help you get through the construction so you can enjoy the products that they have to offer. Last thing I want to mention is that we have Aaron Blair and other members of the downtown partnership here that I'm sure could answer questions that might pertain to them. Michael Lima could, is here and could answer questions about business tax related things. And Randall Morrison is here from Public Works and he can handle any construction-related questions that you might have. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you very much. At this point, we'll take this out to the public and I have numerous cards here. So first, it looks like Aaron Blair. After him will be Liz Sanchez.
Thank you very much. And on behalf of our property owners downtown and our businesses, we just say thank you for supporting us over the past couple of years and your continued support going on this year. It's, like Dan said, it's a pretty amazing day today for us and there's a lot of excitement and thought being put into, to the day, the day by the, the city and our staff and the businesses. So we're just very grateful for your support of these incentives. I think it'll be extremely helpful to not only our small businesses, but some of our property owners as well that are looking to improve their properties during construction. With that, I just make myself available for any questions after the speakers and just thank you in advance for your support.
Thank you. Liz Sanchez, and next will be Brian Washington.
Good morning, folks. Liz Sanchez, owner of Casa de Tamales, just opened one month ago right on the Fulton Mall. So we're excited that we're there, excited of what's coming. It's what attracted us to come downtown and open our second location there. I, you know, reach out to you in hopes to look at these incentives that are before you so that we could go, manage through some of these challenges that I think we will have for the next year to year and a half. Because if we put together, I think, a really nice package, not only will it help us current business owners that are there and property owners, but also attract some new businesses to come in. Because wouldn't it be great if over the next year, year and a half, we actually open businesses during construction? That would just be fantastic. So thanks very much.
Thank you very much. Brian Washington, after Brian will be Kurt James.
Hello, Council. My name is Brian Washington. I'm the owner of Take Three Burgers, right across from Peeves, 1230 Fulton Mall. We've been in business 16 months and going strong, really nice. I just wanted to come in and say that I really would like your support so we can move forward. And I will, especially on signage, I was, one thing that I see is that during that time, I know someone was sent over and was really hard on the signage outside, no A-frames and all this. So I'd like to, one thing, I think that we need to be visible and I need to be able to direct, so, I just want to induce myself and maybe you can come by and have a burger. Thank you.
What is your best burger? What's your most popular burger?
California.
All right.
California burger.
Avocado?
Avocado, bacon.
You're singing my tune. Thank you. Okay, Kurt James. After Kurt, we'll have Robert Gerfield.
Hello, my name is Kurt James. My wife and I recently opened Root General, 1239 Fulton Mall next to Peeves Public House. We've been open now for four months and we're very excited about today and everything going on. And we just ask any incentive you can help us with to keep the business going. We know it's going to be some tough times, but we are really looking forward to it. So anything you can do to help would be appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Robert Gerfield is next. After him will be Craig Shartan.
Hello, Council and friends. I'm Robert Gerfield. I'm a building owner at the corner of Mariposa and Fulton, and I'm very pleased that we're going to create Fulton Street again. But I also want to support, I want to support this package of incentives. And I would give you just a little point of view, many of the, I have nine businesses in my buildings and from food and clothing and some services. And the merchants who've been there for a long time have told me how traffic on the mall, pedestrian traffic on the mall has contracted. There's, there's much less activity there currently than there has been even five years ago. So one thought that occurred to me was, in terms of subsidizing the parking or giving free parking, we're not getting much parking revenue from people who are not coming to the Fulton Mall right now. And if we can give them the benefit of some free parking, it should have, it has the potential of having a great impact on the people who are struggling to do business down there. And so I urge you to support that from that consideration. And we'll all be ahead when their business picks up and we have more activity on the mall. I'm also planning, and my merchants are planning, some revisions and modifications of their buildings, some of which are substantial. And we will benefit from the waiving, waiving of fees by the city. That will be very helpful to, to all of us. So I urge you to pass this package and look forward to your help. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Gerfield. Craig Shartan, after Craig will be Ms. Hunt.
Good morning, Council President and Councilmembers. My name's Craig Shartan, 1243 Fulton Mall. And we certainly urge your support for this incentive package today and look forward to seeing you later this afternoon at the groundbreaking ceremony. seeing you later this afternoon at the groundbreaking ceremony. In looking at downtowns, as Dan mentioned earlier, we saw that the recent opening of pedestrian malls actually saw an increase in business. But it was because those communities really got behind the existing businesses and said, we're going to make sure that we can help them during the construction process. Something similar happened in the Tower District when the bulb-outs were in. There were Facebook pages, and people made a concerted effort to support those businesses when they knew that they would be somewhat blocked. So we urge all of you to be part of this wave of telling people and reminding people that every business will be open every day during construction. Every business will have access. That's part of the contract that you approved for the construction contractor. And really help be a part of this push to have people know, because there will be uncertainty. I get asked almost every day, what's going to happen during construction? Will you be blocked? All those kinds of things. So there'll be bridges, there'll be signs, there'll be certainly a social media push. We'll have several events to keep people walking through. But there's also an opportunity to bring people down because there is change. And so encourage people, as you talk to them, to come down and see that change, take pictures during the change. So when the grand reopening happens, they'll all remember this time that we're going through and be part of the history of the transformation of our downtown. So keep that mantra going. Keep going everywhere you get a chance to talk to folks. Remind them every business is open every day during construction. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Shartan. Ms. Hunt?
Thank you very much. I'm not going to talk against this project because these people deserve the money and stuff that the process has been taking. They deserve the money that's going to help them keep, stay open. But I want them to know a little bit about this here, the reason why we're in the shape that we are with downtown City of Fresno. Because we, the redevelopment had all this money for downtown Fresno. The federal government, everybody sent money here to build up beautiful. We had Gaucho, Zuccas, Walter Smith. We had all these stores down here, beautiful, everything, firestones everywhere. Then all of a sudden, the money started moving away. All the businesses started moving away. All the beer companies and everything started moving away from down here. Because seven developers bought this place. I gave the bond book to Jack O'Connor, because I used to be on the school board for West Fresno Elementary School District. I took it up there because I wanted to know why West Fresno, why West Fresno man was on the back of those bond books a hundred percent, because we was paying City Hall a lot of money. All that, and he kept the book. Jack O'Connor knows that this, seven developers own this downtown Fresno, and they are supposed to be responsible for paying these people some of this money that they have. And Swearengen knows it. And then I talk about this all the time, that property, Mr. Brand brought it up in the paper the other day, which I talk about, when you move off your property, your taxes going to go way up, way up. And all that money that's downtown and that extra spending money that you guys got up here already rolled in, it's not been told to the public, where is that money? Mr. Brandell, he knows. He was on TV, on the radio channel. They asked him questions. He said, what you doing protecting Swearengen? He said, no. He still telling the truth. You guys all signed for that paper for them to get all this clear money. You guys not talking about all that clear, free money from downtown and all these surrounding areas when that, when that LAFCO and all that stuff is illegal against the law. Never was approved. And you're quiet. So if you guys leave here, and Pereira Daddy coming back, because he was here, Dan Juan Quid was here, the name of City of Fresno really is named the town, Marlene Murphy, they was over here, Dan Chris Patrick was over here. Everybody knows what was going over here. Lot of mess. I was sitting here, but I seen Craig on TV. He was almost about to cry because he couldn't get no business down there, and he put all of his work and his time, everything building this place up. Yes, we're going to help him. Because the mission and the private house tore up downtown partly because they was throwing bricks into windows, bricks in Walter Smith, bricks in gold and jurors and diamonds, when they brought them, homeless people out here. Now you want to come back. What about the people here? You guys knew this was here. See, I've been here 14 years. He been going through this mess for all these many years. He knows. And then everybody else knows, and I've been here. Never got a proclamation from none of you guys, but I don't care. I don't need nothing from you because God got me on the road. You guys going to have to take care of downtown Fresno. And Assembly Brothers, Aggrainvilles and all them, they own downtown and mostly parts of it, and they sell them piece by piece. I feel that everybody should have their part to pay. This group, so they can keep their business open. Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else from the community that'd like to come forward and comment on this item? Please do so. If not, we'll close public comment. Bring it back up here. District Three, Councilmember Baines.
Thank you, Council President. So obviously, I think, appreciate the staff report and comments, Dan. Appreciate the business owners for coming down here and reminding us of why we need to help you guys out. We appreciate that. And just a couple of clarifying things for the public that may be listening. You know, this staff recommendation is not about giving businesses money. I just want to make sure that everyone's clear. This is about giving them a couple of tools that hopefully will keep their clientele coming, which is why they're asking for, you know, the ability to validate parking for the two hours. If they want to do certain expansions on their businesses or what have you, we want to be able to waive some planning fees for them. We want to, in some cases, we want to make sure that they're not having to, you know, waiving the business tax for, you know, a couple, a period of time. So these issues aren't anything where we're going to be writing them a check, but we are going to provide some incentives on behalf of their businesses because we're tearing up the street, and we know that there are going to be impacts. And we don't want to pretend like we, we want to be sensitive to the impacts they're going to have. So we're going to do what we can to help mitigate those impacts as much as we can, and we know it won't be enough. So with all this here, with all that we're doing, we know that the potential for some businesses not surviving is there. It's impossible to not have this item and not recognize that reality. So we're going to do what we can, in my opinion, to mitigate that as best we can, and we're going to hope and pray for your success over the next 14 months. We're all very excited about what's coming. We really are. But, you know, as I always like to liken these large infrastructure projects to, you know, the end product is going to be beautiful. But as Craig Shartan can talk about, when he grew that beard right in the beginning, it didn't look all that great. You know, it was scruffy, you know, some places grew in more than others, and, you know, the goatee didn't quite connect like it wanted to and what have you. It was a rough process. The end product looks good, but the growing process is tough. This will be a lot like that. There are going to be some rough patches. Some places aren't going to connect when we want them to, but the end product will be something I think we'll be proud of. So with that, I'd like to make a motion that we accept staff's recommendation.
Have a motion by Member Baines, second by Member Brand. Next up, Councilmember Soria.
Thank you, Council President. I will be supporting this item because I do agree with my council colleague and the comments that he just made in terms of the city being committed to supporting our small businesses and with this project trying to mitigate any impacts that the construction may cause some of those businesses. I know that previously, I think a few months ago, I worked with the administration also to set aside $50,000 to create or to have funding for businesses that may not be able to keep up with, you know, the construction and, as mentioned, could potentially want to move, to relocate. So it's our efforts, I think, from the administration and the council to demonstrate that we're committed to make, to make sure that small businesses in our community do succeed and that we provide them incentives and the tools so that they can continue to thrive, if it's in the Fulton Mall or if it's somewhere else in the City of Fresno, because we know that small businesses are truly the backbone of our economy here in the city. So with that, I'd be supportive of this measure.
President Capriolo has left a few minutes, and I'm next up. And so I had a few questions. Mr. Zach? In your presentation, you made mention of signage. Can you tell us a little bit more about that and how intense or how heavy are you going to go into signage?
That is related to the contractor and the construction. And so for that question, I'd actually prefer to bring up Randall Morrison from Public Works, who'd be more knowledgeable about the specifics of it, if you don't mind.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good morning, Randall.
Morning, Council.
Lack your goatee.
So, yeah, we are working closely with the contractor to establish a signage program. I know that there will be the typical detour traffic control signage that they will be required to put in place, but they've also mentioned that they're going to put some extra signage at either end or at the end where maybe there's a closure, saying that all businesses are open. We're also working closely with the Downtown Fresno Partnership to explore other signage options, and I think they may have some other options in mind. I don't know. Do you want to have? I know that they're working on a open-for-business campaign, and we're going to be working closely with them on that.
Okay, thanks. Couple things I'd like to make mention of, and maybe, Aaron, since you're heading the downtown deal, you don't need to get up. I just want to make some comments. Just something to consider when you're working with the signage. A few years back, I worked with Dell Estabrook, our parking person, and Club One was having a lot of concern with customers not knowing where to park. And so Dell came up with idea with about a little bit bigger signage, showing folks that there's actually a downtown garage there, right underneath there, and installed some larger signage. But even went a little bit further than that, probably out toward Ventura or Ennio, directing traffic to say Club One Parking. And so that's one of the biggest concerns I hear from folks is saying, you know, I want to go to this place, but I don't know until I'm actually up on the parking garage that it says parking rather than directing me from 41 or 180 or that type of thing. And another thing, you know, you may want to consider in the mid-'90s, late-'90s, the city council, and I don't think it was ever rescinded, named the north end of the mall, the Arts and, the Cultural Arts and Entertainment District. And there's never been a sign that put up that designates that area. Mr. Washington, that's something that I think would be helpful to you even on art hop nights, that you're open, you know, if you're open a little bit later, but folks know that that's the, that part of the mall. And the other thought was that the, that would create somewhat of a path or driveway to the Tower District by having additional signage there directing folks to the Tower and from the Tower back. And we talked about using the trolley car buses to go back and forth on certain nights of the week to make that link. The only thing that was missing was housing, and you've got the housing there now to accommodate that. But that was one of the plans that had been thought of, and if that north end could be designated as that with a proper signage, I think that would be helpful. The other part on the south end of the mall was to encourage more signage around the convention center area, directing folks to the mall and letting them know this is the way to go. And this is where there's a lot of activity going on. We have the Chukchansi Park there, you know, now you've got the brewery there as well. But even having signage to direct that there, and I think that that would also encourage more, more convention center business because then folks that come to conventions or events, now they can see the signage and see where they're, they can go and eat or enjoy their free time a little bit more. And I think once that word gets out, working with the convention, the old Convention Visitors Bureau, I still call them that, that that would be part of their marketing plan to work on that. But you've got a great opportunity in really increasing that signage to attract folks to the mall. I mean, it's just, they just need that direction and bigger signage, even vehicles going down Ventura, letting them, telling them there from, rather than just coming up on the site itself, be it parking, underground parking, or the mall. But those are some of the things that I see that we didn't, that wasn't completed back in the, in the middle and late-'90s, and now you have the opportunity to kind of create something that's going, that's going to be helpful and starting anew. So that's just some of the things for consideration. But I think signage is really good, and Dell had a lot of good ideas, still does, you know. So he's a, he's a great resource. So anyway, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Member Brand.
Thank you, Council President. This project, this construction project is going to have a bigger impact, I think people think. And so I am fully in favor of offering economic assistance to these businesses affected. And we have a $52,000 annual baseline, city manager, on business tax fees with 110 businesses.
I'm sorry, what was the question again, Council?
Our baseline is $52,000 in annual business license revenue. Okay. Just to give you an idea, as this thing moves forward and is fully developed, I believe a lot of the rents are 50 cents a foot. That sound about right? That's pretty low. But already, we've seen with the South Stadium Project that we approved here a few weeks ago, their standards are putting up residential rates at $1.40, and they're putting retail rates at $2.00 a square foot. And that's a view into the future on where this is going. And my hope would be that the businesses there would transition and be successful and compete, and by having more business would be able to pay the higher rent. But the reality is some businesses are not going to make it. They're going to, there's going to be a transition. There's going to be a total change on the makeup. You start getting national retailers just not going to have the same mix. So beyond what we're doing here, which I'm fully in favor of, we need, as a city, since we're the moving party on this item, to have a transition plan for these businesses that may have to relocate because they simply won't be able to compete at $2.00 a foot and pay the rent and make a profit. Because this whole underlying philosophy here was that the mall and a lot of the downtown area are underperforming properties, underperforming in terms of the revenues they generate, property taxes, sales taxes, room taxes, business taxes, and over-consuming in city services in terms of, you know, police, fire, code enforcement, all those services. I believe this will be a success, and all those fees will elevate. As those fees elevate, there'll be dramatic increase in the revenues. These will then become, at the very least, self-supporting, which have an impact on the entire general fund. But I've seen construction projects before. I remember the widening of, I think of Herndon and others. And if it goes too long and it's not done properly, it'd have a devastating impact on the businesses affected here. So I know the methodology is going south to north, correct, on the mall? And I know there's, I just want to make sure we have procedures where these guys can stay open and have the least amount of distraction to their businesses in terms of, whether it be parking, it's getting pedestrian traffic. And I'm sure that's all being taken into consideration. But I want to reemphasize, we need to, maybe as a council, monitor how this is going so we can, you know. There's 110 people here with 110 livelihoods and 110 families that, again, we've chosen to make a change, and we're hoping in the end, it's, a lot of these businesses will thrive and benefit from it, but some won't. We're doing everything we can to accommodate them. And on the issue on fees, CUPs and permit fees, can I, Dan, ask a few questions?
Absolutely.
I'm trying to wonder, if somebody has an existing business, why would they need to come back and do a CUP or whatever during the construction process? come back and do a CUP or whatever during a construction process?
They wouldn't. So the, the parking validations, the business tax waiver, that's going to really benefit the folks that are there now. Reducing fees on signage, development permits, conditional use permits, that's really going to help folks who are looking at coming in to the area and might need those permits, and that'll save those, those folks money and maybe add an incentive there. The only way it would affect an existing business is, you know, CUP wouldn't really come into play, but if they were going to, you know, if there was going to be a big expansion and it somehow needed a site plan review, then, then that could help there too, but for the most part, it's going to be new folks that benefit from that.
So really, the benefit for fee waivers would be people primarily coming in during the timeline. So I'm assuming, yeah, people have got plans, and there's a lot of development going, a lot of investment going on, so this would expire at the term of the, of the construction?
Correct. Which is anticipated to be 14 months, so we've timed this at 14 months.
But if an existing business wants to expand, wants to make improvements, same fee waivers?
That's right.
Okay, I'm okay with that. Thank you for the explanation. Thank you. Member Brand, now, it's your opportunity.
All right, well, I definitely don't want to win the blah, blah, blah. All of, everything that's been said, I totally agree with, so I definitely will be supporting you guys and your efforts to, you know, maintain and grow during the mall construction, construction phase, and so we'll keep our fingers crossed, and I'm going to come have one of your hamburgers. Thank you very much, Council President.
Thank you, the screen is clear. You know, I've, I'm a businessman, a businessperson myself, self-employed for 40 years, and with other opportunities and so forth and so on, so I'm very, very business-oriented, and I'd be supporting this, notwithstanding my vote on these, this particular issue of the street, but I've always and will continue to support business. And to the businesspeople out here and the business leaders, you'll have my support today and every day when it comes to bringing business, expanding business, increasing business in the community of Fresno. Thank you. Screen is clear, have a motion by Member Baines, both seconded by a Member Brand, and all who's in favor, anybody opposed. Passes 7-0, congratulations, thank you all very much. Next, we'll go to item two.
Great. Do you want to, like, want to go? Uh, great. Yeah, yeah, I mean, I've some witnesses here that might be standing in line, but I guess I'll just, oh, yeah. Frank, you do a good job, you're all the guys.
Mm-hmm. Did you vote for South? Okay, thank you very much. Okay, we'll now move on to, we can do unscheduled communication, and I have cards on that item. The first card I received is from Tamara Algotz. If you'd like to come forward, and you have three minutes, please give us your name and address, and the floor is yours. Good morning.
Hang on, let me pull up my...
Okay. Did I pronounce your first name correctly?
My name's Tamara.
Tamara, okay, thank you.
I think you called me Cameron last time I was here.
I'm sorry.
No, it's okay. Um, okay, so I was here a few weeks ago. I'm kind of coming back just to follow up, because I had scheduled a meeting with my councilwoman, and it ended up not working out, and I had to talk to her Chief of Staff instead.
You may need to get a little closer to the mic, so we can hear you loud and clear.
Thank you.
There you go, thank you.
I had a meeting set up with my councilwoman, and it ended up that it was just her Chief of Staff instead, and I was kind of disappointed about that. And I talked to her for well over an hour, and let her know I was having some personal issues and things like that, and she was supposed to get back to me with resources, and she never did. I never received a phone call or an email, no follow-up at all. And actually, it actually ended up affecting me in a really, really bad way. I have PTSD, anxiety, things like that, because of what happened to me six years ago when I was raped, which is why I'm here, to talk to you about the statistics. And I know, I don't want to read you the same speech I read last time, I would rather just talk to you about it. I would like the city council to please help me, maybe stand behind me, working with the police department, maybe to retrain them on how to handle calls for sexual assault, things like that. I have a lot of ideas, and I'd like to meet with some of you to go over the ideas. The ideas I don't have, I can't give them to you in a minute, but I just wanted to come today to let you know that I was really disappointed in the fact that I didn't get a follow-up at all. I met with Senator Berryhill's people, and they were really nice, and they were really supportive, and they gave me a lot of information on how to move forward on what the specific topic is that I'm trying to bring up. I want, I want this to be a community discussion. I feel like it's not being handled. There are police officers in Tower all weekend, just standing around, and they hear us being harassed, and they don't say anything. And when I walked up to a police officer myself and said, "You can hear them verbally, sexually assaulting us, why don't you say anything?", and my, my answer that I've been given is, "Well, if we went after every man who harassed a woman like that, we wouldn't get our real jobs done." And it's really offensive, and it's really terrible, and I feel like I wasn't heard when I was here a few weeks ago, and ended up causing a lot of personal issues for me, because I was really seeking help. I was reaching out, trying to get resources for myself, and, like I said, I never, ever got a follow-up, I never got a phone call, I never got an email or anything like that. So I was just here today to tell you that I'm very disappointed in the fact that city council kind of let me down, more or less. That's all.
Thank you very much. Next, we have several, I'm sorry, Councilmember Soria.
Tamara, I just wanted to respond to some of the comments. I know that you did get an opportunity to meet with Terry. I will make sure that, I know she did give you some resources the day that you guys are, pointed you to some resources. I am happy to talk to you further, to see what other ideas that you may have. I think the council meeting will be wrapping up, so I will step aside and come and talk to you shortly. Thank you.
Next, we have several cards on medical marijuana. We'll start with Don Ciano Soria. Next will be Stephanie Soria.
Don, can I go first? Really quick, I want to, I want to kind of, I sent you all an email this morning, and you know that I don't send a lot of emails. This is probably maybe the third or fourth I've ever sent on city council, but I want to read you really briefly this email, because I was able to make a connection with Mr. Soria last week. Stay with me on this one, it's important to me and to him, so. "I'm writing this email in reference to a crisis faced by a constituent who lives at 3770 East Illinois Street. Last week, a young man named Don Soria came to speak to our council. He was very frustrated and despondent because of the situation he is facing at home. Don came to speak to council about the closing of a medical marijuana dispensary in the Tower District. Don used some choice words while addressing the council during unscheduled communication, and expressed frustration that no member of the council answered his questions. I reached out to him the day, the next day after the council meeting. We had a very positive conversation. In that conversation, I learned that Don's 80-year-old grandmother, Maria Angela Leon de Soria, is suffering from a number of chronic ailments that cause her extreme pain. She suffers from a spine that is broken into, in two places, osteoporosis and arthritis. Don explained that she was at first reluctant to begin using marijuana for medicinal purposes, but clergy, family, and friends reached out to her to get her to try it. Prescription meds were not helping her in her condition. Reluctantly, Mrs. Soria did try medical marijuana, and it helped her to feel better. Last week, when Don came to council, he wanted to know why the dispensary was closed, because now his grandmother has no place to obtain medical marijuana. Don explained to me that he is unable to do a lot of things young men enjoy doing, like working and going to school, because he is one of the primary caregivers to his grandmother. It hurts him to see her in pain. We had an emotional conversation. I sent this email to you all for two purposes. Number one, so that you can have a window into understanding Don's comments at the lectern last week, and number two, to get the conversation going again about medical marijuana dispensaries and whether or not they have a place in the state's fifth-largest city. Don also asked me to communicate to you all his apology for the language and tone that he used while addressing the council. After speaking with him, I can report that he is a gentle soul with the best interest of his loved one at heart. It was his first attempt at contacting government officials. It is my wish that we can come together to give him a positive experience. Please feel free to contact me with questions or suggestions, or to schedule a meeting with Don and myself. Thank you."
You're welcome. Mr. Soria, you have the floor.
I'd just like to begin by apologizing for last week, and anybody that I may have offended, but I felt it necessary to voice my frustration at the people who stand in the way of my grandmother receiving her medicine. Today, instead of yelling at you, I'm going to do the right thing and, and share with you my grandmother's story, just like Mr. Clint, Mr. Clint said. Her world is filled with pain, constant pain. She has two fractured spine, spinal vertebra things, and, well, she, she's just in real bad shape, and this whole thing has just really affected, has really affected me and my family. My father is unable to look for work, because she requires 24-hour, seven-days-a-week care. Me and my sister have put aside our dreams and goals, because we think it's important to stay with my grandmother during the, during these difficult times, and, and I just wanted to bring awareness to you guys, and to the fact that, I know that medical marijuana is a controversial issue for some of you, but for me, it's personal. It's personal, and it affects me and my family. And I know there's other people out there that can't be here right now, that are patients there that are in the same situation, and I just want to urge you guys to reconsider your stance on this issue, and to approach it with an open mind, and put aside any prejudices that you guys may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Soria. All right, next is Stephanie Soria, and after Stephanie, I can't read this card, starts with an R. I'm not sure. Oh, Rick, you're right.
My name's Stephanie Soria. As my brother and Mr. Clint shared with you, my grandma's story, every day is pretty much an uphill battle for my grandma. Every day, she lives in unbearable pain, and some days, she just pleads and prays to God to take her away, because the pain is so, so unbearable. And the worst part is not being able to provide her the medicine that she needs to be able to take away that pain. I know that this ban may not affect you guys personally, but it affects my whole family. Like my brother said, we're 20, and we can't do anything, going out isn't an option. There's no excuses, there's no, nope. Every day, we have to get up and just struggle just to go get by, and having to watch my grandma in this much pain, just. It frustrates me, because it seems like you guys don't care, because Rick has been here for seven years, and every time, because you guys just ignore it and shove it under the rug like it's not important, but there's actually a lot more people that are affected by this that you may not know, and just because it doesn't affect you guys personally, doesn't that mean it's not important? Because it's important to a lot of people that you may not know. And I thought, you guys, as elected officials, your job was to represent us. I want you guys to explain to me why my grandma had to feel like a criminal, when you guys threatened to go into Medmart and arrest every patient and every staff member, while they were just trying to get my grandma the relief that she needs. Why was there direct orders from Fresno PT officers not to respond and not to protect my grandma and the patients and staff at Medmart? I hope you guys reconsider this, because this isn't going to be the last time I'm going to see you guys. I'm going to fight for this, because this isn't just important to me and my family, because we know it doesn't just affect us.
Thank you, Stephanie. After Rick, we'll have Alexandria Ramos Ocasey.
Does this hang on? My name is Rick Morse, operate in member clinic at 334 East Olive Avenue in Fresno, and the first thing I'd like to tell you is, Cliff, time for talking about this is done. I'm going to let you guys know a few phrases today, and we'll put it on the record. The first one is respondiat superior, which means that you're responsible for what happens, what happens in the city of Fresno, and it means that the employees of the city of Fresno are your responsibility, you are responsible for the police department. Some of the responses we've gotten is, "I didn't know, it's not my district, I'm not responsible for the police." Couple of them I made up myself, "I was out of town, I was sick, my car broke down." We got a copy from Madam Mayor to Madam CEO. Couple other legal phrases I'd like for you to think about is, you're saying you didn't know, and there's a concept in law that says, you either knew or should have known, you were made aware, you should have watched these videos, you should have seen what was happening to these people. You either knew, or you should have known. The third phrase I want to put on the record today is that you exceeded the scope and authority of the duties of your office, which means you have no governmental immunity, you can be sued individually as a natural person. You should have talked to people about this before it got this far. I think "I didn't know" is going to be the campaign slogan for everybody this year, "I didn't know, I'm not responsible." "I didn't know, I'm not responsible." "I didn't know, I'm not responsible." On this video, it shows a number of crackheads, one of them's name's Chris Wirth, the other one's name's Kirk Douglas Voight. Kirk Douglas Voight is being charged with attempted murder for trying, allegedly trying to kill Chris Wirth, right across the street from my home. We tried to get the police to come out and do something about this, we begged them. We were told in court that they were issued an instruction, division-wide, not to respond to protect us. That's your division. That's your district. So Mr. Barfield called me the other day, and I told him that if he would meet with me in his office, that I would tell him the motivation behind what's happening out here. I would tell him what I believe the patients are going to do next, and what I'm going to do next. But I can't really tell you right here, because it's one of those things that we're going to have to have a discussion on. What I can tell you is, I'm looking forward to that discussion.
Next, we have Alexandria Ramos Ocasey, and after her, we will have Ms. Hunt. Good morning.
Hi, guys, hope you're having a good one so far. My name is Alexandria, and I'm a proud Prop 215 patient. The primary reason that I'm here is because I think that you guys need some additional perspective as to how patients are really affected by the ordinance that you guys are choosing to enforce. are choosing to enforce right now, not only when it comes to MedMar, when it comes to delivery services, but really just when it comes to the medical marijuana community here in Fresno County. I have severe and traumatic osteoarthritis in my knees because I was a soccer player, had an ACL reconstruction, and have consistently had bad knees for that. When I was 16 and first tore my ACL, I was put on narcotics and I could not take them. I was over the toilet bowl within five minutes every single time because my stomach is too sensitive and I cannot take narcotics. For that time, I had to struggle. I had to suffer. I had to take heavy narcotics on a 16-year-old girl's stomach and have migraines suffered. I went through quite a bit and it wasn't helpful by any means. And more importantly, considering the fact that all the medical marijuana research was available, saying how much more effective it was, and I still wasn't able to have access to it because of that, was additionally troubling. And again, you know, this is a reminder that there aren't just, you know, psychoactive drugs. There are non-psychoactive drugs, and these are the ones that we're talking about, primarily CBD oils that cancer patients use, that people with severe arthritis use, people with muscle spasms, veterans with PTSD. These are the things that we're talking about, and these are the things that people in Fresno County do not have access to because of the ordinances. I recently had to have the microfracture drilling surgery done. They drilled three holes into my knee so I could regrow bone marrow. Regrowing bone marrow is extremely painful. I hope that none of you have to go through that experience. But for me, I could not receive my drugs. I could not receive my care here in Fresno County. Every single delivery place did not have what I needed. Either they were out of stock or did not carry it, or they were afraid to enhance their stock because of the fear of the police department coming down on them. I had to drive 40 minutes. And reminder, when you have a knee problem, you cannot drive. So I had to have other people drive me 40 minutes to Goshen so I could actually get prescriptions. That being said, that's very difficult, and most people don't have access to that. For example, them, they had to take care of their family members. A 40-minute drive is costly. A 40-minute drive is not something that you can do when you have to have 24/7 care for somebody. What I'm reminding you guys is that patients are at risk here, and more importantly, people are going through unsafe means to get things. And more importantly, now that I've actually gotten to the point where, you know, first, I was worried about getting a medical marijuana card because of the stigma. And then once I finally decided that it doesn't matter, I've gone through way much and people should deserve to know, I now consistently have people coming on behalf of their parents and grandparents to me, seeing if they can get medicinal care. A 21-year-old girl should not be having to be the main savior for PTSD patients, past veterans, 74-year-old women with severe arthritis and cancer to get their prescription drugs. Thank you.
This is my unscathed communication, and I'm talking about everything I want to talk about. And Mr. Clint, Olivia, nobody can write no article about you in the paper, especially when we giving away all kind of money. I want everybody to know that the city council is a redevelopment agency. Now deny me that and tell me you guys it's not the redevelopment agency and the redevelopment agency board and the city council. Because you can't tell me you guys is not that same person. You guys gonna down olivier on the TV because he might have got the donation for people that did good work around here or some reason. Bruce and the rest of them got raises, bonuses. They gonna try to clown him on the radio. It's not fair. If we wanna clown somebody, let's clown about this ballpark out here. We got two bonds for that ballpark, ballpark A and a ballpark B. That's why the ballpark B is just coming up out here with these new buildings. It took all them many years for them to get it so they could put it together with this other one over here. The whole process is illegal. Then we're gonna talk about somebody, talk about all this money we got coming through here and how all this, and all this money through them taxes. When you get move off your property, you move off of it, the Proposition 13 say the proposition below. When you move off of that property, the property taxes goes up. All that money is clear. That's what redevelopment is, redevelopment. That's what urban is, urban renewal area. They get you off your land, get that property taxes, don't care nothing about us, and then they gone. But what is they doing with that money? Bruce get hold to that money, that clear property, that money that was they talking about from Proposition 13 that's coming through. Swearingen talking about we got all this money, we was all broke. No, they wasn't. They was hiding it. Ask this guy here. He was on the radio up there and they was talking to him about it. And then I was on other end, and you guys approved the paper for them to get this money. And Swearingen them up here bragging what I'm doing all this year. I got the model over here going, yeah, but what about who took the model away from us? Why is that my district three stretching over there, two tower district when we supposed to be in southwest Fresno? How come all my signs got southwest Fresno? The county attorney, the county department, Bruce, told me they turned to Quarten and made us southeast. That's why all them signs is southeast and southwest is out here on Blackstone out there and well, and then private zone and enterprise zone supposed to be for us over here. All this downtown, them Assammy brothers, all them development guys, get them all together, Bruce. Let's find out who own downtown. Where's this money come? Because that Jackal County got that book. It's a 1976 general obligation bond. I got it from right here. They gave it to me. They owns, they don't own nothing. And then the redevelopment, that's you. Redevelopment is you all. The city council is you all. You guys are everything. All that money from redevelopment, that's your money. So who's getting it? These people upstairs that's got their name on some kind of police paper, sign their name that they're me. That's on the paper at the courthouse, me. I went to the federal courthouse once, they say that's Europeans coming around here getting all this here money from everybody up and down the line. I wanna stop to this, and I'm fixing to go home.
Thank you very much.
You are attorney, and I'm gonna put you to head of this because you should know better because you're a lawyer. Thank you very much. Good luck to everybody. Now, the cards is on the table. You guys do what you gotta do.
Peace be with you.
Because they come up here to investigate the FBI. I don't say Barbara Hunt didn't tell you.
Now, we will, that concludes our agenda, other than timed items, which we'll do at 11 o'clock sharp. In the meantime, we'll go into closed session. City Attorney?
Yes, we have one case existing litigation, City of Fresno versus Maria Snell.
So everyone, please be seated. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, and my colleagues. It's 11 o'clock and we're ready to go forward. But before we do that, we had some, A consent item that was pulled from the morning calendar, Item 1B, award a concession agreement for the operation and maintenance of Camp Fresno, and that was pulled by Member Soria. You have the floor.
I have the floor. Thank you, Council President. Just had a comment, I pulled it. I'm gonna be supporting this item today, but I did wanna make a comment about the information provided in the staff report. I did note that we received only one response to the RFP. Did read the comments of the challenge to bring in more proposals due to the location, right, to the site and kind of how removed it is. I am pleased that we received a qualified bid, but I will just like to note so that my council colleagues know, and just for the record, that the advertisement for proposal was limited to the Business Journal. And so maybe one thing that I would encourage that we do, I don't know if we could have done something different for a better response. Also, I don't know if we, if when we do some of this procurement, and for me, I think procurement is very important, how we outreach so that community members know, so that small business folks understand, you know, for the black chamber, the Hispanic chamber, some of those other businesses that we don't typically see them bid for some of these potential opportunities, that we do a better job of procurement. I don't know if something could have been done different in this instance, but I do believe that providing some publications, or I believe that providing publications in the English only limits some opportunities. You know, I'm a big proposal, proponent, sorry. I'm a big supporter, actually, of notifying folks, of notifying folks in other languages aside from English. And so I think when we're talking about procurement and, you know, issues like this, that we only get one bid, that maybe we're really looking at our process and how we're notifying folks that there's opportunities for them to participate. So I don't know if you have any information as to any additional outreach that you guys did, or is it just completely the Business Journal?
The, I mean, basically what we did is we just used the traditional ways of promoting and advertising that the city's done in the past. I did note the comments that you made and we will be sensitive to that. We did receive, well, we did receive eight, I mean, eight companies did express interest in the proposal, but none of them, none of the, well, at least seven of the companies, none of them were really interested in doing the whole entire proposal. Some wanted to only do the maintenance, some only wanted to do capital construction, but nobody, once we explained to them that they would have to be responsible for operating the camp, promoting, doing promotion, you know, collecting receipts and everything, that's when most of these people just pulled back. And the divers who had done it in the past are very familiar with that. They're the only ones that actually submitted a legitimate proposal at the end of the day. But I think the casting a broader net in the future is something that, at least from my standpoint in my department, I will be sensitive to in the future.
I appreciate that, and I just encourage, you know, because I know sometimes we only end up with one or two, and I get it, sometimes folks in the community don't have the expertise or the skills, so I get that sometimes there are limitations, but I would encourage not only your department, but other departments during the procurement, that we not just do the Business Journal. Not everyone reads the Business Journal, like not everyone reads the Fresno Bee. So let's start thinking kind of outside our traditional norms so that we do really cast a broader audience when it comes to RFPs. Thank you.
Have a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you. Tell us, Member Olivier? All right. I have a motion by Member Soria. I'll second it. All those in favor? Opposed? Pass it 6-0 with Member Baines absent. Now is the best part of the day, other than waking up. The, we're gonna have our ceremonial presentations now, so welcome, everybody, and it's great to see you all here, and I hope you're all as excited as we are up here on the dais. So first, we're gonna start off with recognizing March 7th through the 13th as Multiple sclerosis Awareness Week, and that sponsorship is by Councilmember Brand. Fotini, come on up. This is the seventh year that I've had the honor to introduce this MS, and this will be my last year as a council member doing this. It may not necessarily be my last time here doing this, but it will be my last time as a council member. And, you know, MS is, it's affected my family, it's affected Ginger's family, and it's an insidious indiscriminate disease that affects about 800 families in Fresno, and it, not just the victims, but the families. And these guys have done a tremendous job of raising money for research. Now, let's, Fotini, before I do the resolution, say a few words.
Sure. Thank you so much, Councilmember Brand, for doing this for so many years consecutively in a row. We're so grateful to the entire city council for doing this for us. MS is a disease of the central nervous system with no known cause and no known cure, but it's so exciting to see how far it's come. I was diagnosed nine years ago, and when I was diagnosed, we're only five approved treatments, and now there's over 13 for relapsing remitting MS, which is so exciting. And now there's a drug on the forefront for progressive MS. And so it's our Walk MS event that we hold here every year that goes towards that. We're so proud that in '07, the MS Walk in Fresno was a $50,000 walk. Last year, we hit almost $200,000, and so we're so excited. That goes to so many local programs and services and research. And last year, the MS Society funded over $53 million in MS research, so we're so excited. And the MS Society just loves doing what we're doing in our community, and we're so excited. In the fall, we're actually honoring Mayor Ashley Swearingen at our Dinner of Champions in the fall, and so we're so excited about that, and that'll be our fifth annual Dinner of Champions. So we have so much to do in this community and so much more to do. So thank you so much, and a big thanks to everybody who's here and a lot of Fresno State public health students who are here too. So thank you for this honor.
Thank you. Thank you. City Clerk, would you read the proclamation?
Whereas multiple sclerosis affects over 800 residents and their families in Fresno and over 2.3 million worldwide, and whereas multiple sclerosis is an unpredictable disease of the central nervous system that interrupts the flow of information within the brain and between the brain and the body, and whereas multiple sclerosis is diagnosed between the ages of 20 and 50, and whereas two to three times more women than men have been diagnosed with multiple sclerosis, and whereas the National Multiple Sclerosis Society has declared the week of March 7th through 13th, 2016, to be National Multiple Sclerosis Awareness Week, and society helps address the challenges of living with multiple sclerosis through a 50-state network of chapters that fund MS research, provide services to people with multiple sclerosis and their family, offer professional education and further advocacy efforts, and whereas Walk MS in Fresno will take place on Saturday, April 23rd, at Fig Garden Village with festivities for the entire family. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and city council of the city of Fresno do hereby support and recognize the 2016 MS Walk MS Fresno on Saturday, April 23rd, 2016, commencing at Fig Garden Village as a temporary, tremendous opportunity to raise awareness about multiple sclerosis and move toward a cure, and do further proclaim March 7th through 13th, 2016, to be Multiple Sclerosis Awareness Week in the city of Fresno.
Give me another hand. And have your ribbon on, not crooked like mine is, but straight like Steve's is. Want to say one more word?
Yes. Hi, I know a lot of you because I'm usually over here as a Fresno County employee. My name is Kristi Johnson, but today for this important cause, and I just wanted to make sure that we invited you all not only to our walk on the 23rd, but we've given you some information about some of the fundraising events we're gonna have next week, including the Taste of Hope. Taste of Hope. And my favorite event, which I'm sponsoring, which is the dinner at West Woods on Tuesday night. So hopefully, anytime on Tuesday, actually lunch to dinner, if you eat there with the flyer, 20% will come back to the MS Society, and same with the Taste of Hope. We'll get a nice contribution back. So enjoy some time out, some drinks, some eat, and give to a great cause. And again, we thank you so much for having us here all these years. There's a lot of local government staff and families that are affected by this, and it's very important to bring it to the forefront.
And also, when you see the orange ribbons tied at Fig Garden Village, Fresno State, Fresno City College, Northwood Village, that's in honor of MS Awareness Week, so don't forget to wear your orange. So I know orange is my new black, so wear orange.
Well, first, congratulations. It's an honorable, worthy cause, and we're here to support you in any way we can. Next is my turn, and Alan Peters and Kristy Sartor, would you come up, please? And, you know, everybody that's in support of this proclamation, come on up. Everybody, come on up here. This is, this is a good event. How are you, sir?
Good to see you.
Good to see you. Thank you. How are you? Thank you.
Dan, nice to see you.
Mary.
Mary, nice to see you. Hi, Nancy.
Anyway, we did this just last year with the Alzheimer's, and then, I don't know who you know at the Fresno Bee, but this was in the recent edition, and if I can hold the two, so it's almost a full page, all right, almost a full page in the front, almost a whole page in the back, and there's another page after that, so you guys are very well-connected. I don't know how you did that, but there's a lesson for me to be learned there. But it's great to have you guys here, and I've highlighted a few things, but I don't want to steal your thunder, but I did want to say that there are 200 members, 200-member ensemble, performing with a 40-piece orchestra. Amazing. And you'll present several pieces relevant to your history. And this organization has been around since 1956. It had thousands of people in the audience, hundreds of singers come through, and they performed all over the world, China, throughout Europe, England, Scandinavia, Italy, my favorite, Greece, France, and, believe it or not, Carnegie Hall, Carnegie Hall, two times. Simply amazing. So we've got an event coming up March 6th, and I'm sure you want to tell us a little bit about it.
My name is Alan Peters. I'm president of the chorus. Anna Hamry is our artistic director, and Kristy Sarter is our chorus manager. So we're well represented this morning with other members of the chorus. This Sunday afternoon at 2:30 will be the 60th anniversary performance of the Community Chorus, Master Corral. So we have interesting bookends in that concert. It begins with a cantata by Johann Sebastian Bach that was sung at the first concert 60 years ago, and we finish the concert with a commissioned piece that we commissioned a local composer, friend of ours, accompanist and member of the chorus, to write the music, and another member of the chorus, Glad Ruiz. Jung Min Seur, incidentally, is the composer. Glad Ruiz is the writer of the text, and we have this world premiere occurring, Like Streams We Gather, which commemorates the San Joaquin Valley, Fresno, and the chorus's history as a representative of our community. So we're encouraging everyone to attend. There are few tickets left. It's almost sold out, so if you want to come, you need to get a ticket soon, but we welcome you to come to this wonderful performance at the Shigoyan Performing Arts Center this Sunday afternoon at 2:30.
Would anyone else like to make a comment or two? You good?
I would just say that, that we have members in there who sang in the first concert, and, and we also have college students, so it's a huge diverse group with every possible career and training there, and they all come together to sing, so it's a great, it's a great reflection of the Central Valley in Fresno. It's, it's gonna be a very prideful event.
You know, part of the headline here was 60 years, the anniversary, but it just, it says here at the beginning, 30, 60, 90, members so elegantly spaced, they're almost singing. At the age of 30, back in 1956, John Donaldson was there for the very first rehearsal of the newly formed and founded Fresno Community Chorus. At the age of 60, he celebrated his birthday in 1986, performing with the chorus, of course, and at age 90, Mr. Donald is 90 years old, and he's a former Board of Supervisors member, and we thank him for his public service again, but at the age of 90, he will sing the world premiere of a piece commissioned for the 60th anniversary of this chorus. So it's fantastic history, simply amazing. So, and I would like to have all of you sign that for me, if you would, please. And listen now, for the City of Fresno, we have a proclamation to the Choral Music Commemoration Day in the City of Fresno, and would you, it would be March 6th, not today, Sunday, March 6th, because that's the big day, that's the big day. Madam Clerk, thank you.
Whereas the Fresno community has long experienced in many rich and valuable ways the enormous power of music that inspires and unites cultures, ages, and the tapestry of diversity that is woven into our community, and whereas choral music is a vital part of every culture and ethnic tradition, enabling persons from all religions, cultures, and musical backgrounds to join together in producing a wide variety of harmonious sounds, allowing all to experience and melodies and rhythms together within our community, and whereas the Fresno Community Chorus has been a musical treasure within the Fresno community since its first concert in March 1956, bringing a wide variety of professional, prepared, and beautifully performed choral works to music lovers in Central California and beyond. And whereas the Fresno Community Chorus has collaborated with numerous local organizations, institutions, and other musical groups such as the Fresno Philharmonic Orchestra, the Bach Children Choir, California State University Fresno, and many local churches, including Holy Trinity Armenian Apostle Church in the commemoration of the 100th anniversary of the Armenian Holocaust and the 100th anniversary of its church sanctuary. And whereas the Fresno Community Chorus Master Choral will be celebrating the 60th anniversary at a special gala concert on March 6th, 2016, featuring the world premiere of newly commissioned choral work by Fresno composer Jung Min Seur, with words by Fresno poet Gladys Ruiz, entitled "Like Stream We Gather," which commemorates the beauty and spirit of the San Joaquin Valley. Now therefore be it resolved that we, Mayor Ashley Swearingen and the Fresno City Council members, do hereby congratulate the Fresno Community Chorus Master Choral on the 60th anniversary and proclaim March 6th to be Choral Music Commemoration Day in the City of Fresno.
Round of applause, please. It's easy. You know, we're just commenting here on this newspaper article that says they've changed their name, and I'll let you announce the new name and the reason for the new name.
We still will be incorporated as the Fresno Community Chorus, but we're calling ourselves now the Fresno Master Corral. We've reached a point where we are able, with the skills of the people involved and the direction of the chorus, to sing virtually anything in the choral repertory, including those works that require philharmonic orchestras to accompany them, and we often serve now as the philharmonic chorus for Fresno. So we've become a little more than just a collection of local community members that sing now and then. We've become a professional chorus, and like many other cities throughout the state and the nation, we've added the Master Corral then to our name to mark the fact that we really have reached a level of skill and expertise. We still welcome singers from the community to join us, but we really have reached a level where we can provide a professional quality of choral music in Fresno.
So everyone from 10 to 90 is welcome to join you folks and perfect their skills and have a great experience with all of you, so, absolutely. So Fresno, let's show up, let's do something and get, keep this crowd going, all right? Thank you all very much. Thank you. Appreciate it. Okay. Now, another event this morning, I see two of my good friends right here, Barry and, who's the executive director of the American Red Cross, and Katie Miller is the board chair. So if you'll come down here and join me, thank you for being here. Today is the 99th anniversary of a partnership between the American Red Cross and the City of Fresno, 99 years together. You don't look 99, but, you know, I didn't know. Well, being a chairboard and an executive director, I know how you, this process will age you with my colleagues up there. It'll age you quick. But anyway, we wanted to commemorate this month, American Red Cross Month, with a proclamation and recognition for all the wonderful things you do for the City of Fresno and our residents. Whenever there's a disaster or crisis, you're always there with shelter, with food, with medicine, with healthcare, all the things that may come into play, and you're, you're like an ever-ready battery. You're just, you're, you've always shown up, you're always there, you can always count on the American Red Cross. And I want to hand the mic over to you, but I, I want to address the fundraiser too, but when you're done. Here you go, Mike. Thanks, Barry.
Thanks, Council President. The American Red Cross, I think, just is, continues to be a steady organization here in the City of Fresno. Council President mentioned 99 years. I think that's, that's a real testimony to the Red Cross's mission, which is to alleviate and reduce suffering and really try to do that through the generosity of donors and through mobilizing our volunteers. We have a wonderful, wonderful volunteer base here, not only here in the City of Fresno, but through our whole Central Valley chapter, and we look forward to starting the next 100 years. And so thank you, Council President, for the time we spent together, and thank you to your colleagues behind me. Got a chance to work with, with many of you on so many different fronts, and certainly just look forward to continuing to provide the important services that the Red Cross offers and really being present in the time of a family's greatest need.
You are a vital service to this community. We thank you for that. Now, last year, I was at your fundraiser, really a great, a great evening, great food, great people, great presentation, brief, I like brief, and it was really well-done. The other thing was, as you wander around, they have, you had a couple of airplanes there, a couple of hot rods, you had signed guitars, you had items from $5 to $5,000, and it was, it was fantastic. I really enjoyed that. So when is that coming up?
So here in the Central Valley, our Real Heroes event will be taking place Saturday, April 30th. It takes place out at the airport, and it's a wonderful 40s-themed fundraiser. It's really the only fundraiser the Red Cross does every year here in the Central Valley, so certainly we'd be happy to have any and everyone join us.
Really, we have to show up because that's, that's their bread and butter, if you will, and we want to perpetuate this for another 99 years, so we must do our part as a community and as a city to support this wonderful organization. So congratulations, Katie and Barry. We have a proclamation for you, and Madam Clerk will address that.
Whereas American Red Cross Month is a special time to recognize and thank our everyday heroes, all those who support the American Red Cross mission to prevent and alleviate human suffering in face of emergencies, and whereas we would like to acknowledge our local heroes in the City of Fresno who have worked tirelessly to provide aid to victims of home fires, multi-apartment fires, floods, and who are actively involved in preparedness education, prevention, and disaster relief services. And whereas across the country and around the world, the American Red Cross course responds to disasters by providing shelter, food, health, and mental health services to enable families and entire communities to get back on their feet, and whereas the City of Fresno has more than 600 dedicated volunteers who service in the past, a year alone, amounted to nearly 15,000 hours to program projects and assistance to 427 local families, providing emergency, short-term shelter, clothing, food, counseling, and case management services. And whereas the American Red Cross has been and continues to be an essential part of Fresno's response when disaster strikes by mobile, mobilizing the power of volunteers, community partners, and the generosity of donors to provide vital disaster relief services to our community. Now therefore be it resolved that we, Mayor Ashley Swearingen and the Fresno City Council members, do hereby applaud the American Red Cross and encourage all Californians to support this organization and its noble humanitarian missions. Be it further resolved that we, Mayor Ashley Swearingen and the Fresno City Council members, do hereby proclaim the month of March 2016 to be American Red Cross Month in the City of Fresno.
You know, folks, that's for an entire month. It's not a day or a week, it's for an entire month. And I wanted to, those statistics are amazing to me, 15,000 hours of programs, of projects, 427 local families have been touched by this organization. And just keep up the good work, really appreciate it, and let's have a big round of applause. This is a great organization. Now we have, I'll let you, you fellas are gonna keep that, didn't you? Councilmember Soria, you're up with the Rogue Festival. I'm very curious and interested to hear about that, yeah. There you go.
Thank you. Thank you. So still, good morning. I am excited to present this proclamation this morning to a great group here in our community. I'll ask, I know that there's a number of board members and also just members of the Rogue Festival, if you guys all want to come up here. So I am proud to have the Rogue Festival Board, Board of Directors here. There's a few members and obviously other member participants. I want to thank Jennifer for reaching out to our office to make sure that we spearheaded this proclamation. Today, we kick off the 15th Annual Rogue Festival in the Tower District, and as many of you guys know, I represent part of the Tower, probably predominantly the majority of the Tower. I do share it with Councilmember Oliver Baines, and then partially also with Clint Olivier. He has a few blocks in the Tower District. But very excited to be here to recognize the fabulous work that you guys have been doing over the 15 years. Just a little bit of background in terms of the festival. It celebrates independent performers and artists by providing the opportunity to showcase works in a friendly, affordable, and creative setting. The festival includes theater, dance, spoken word, music, performance art, puppetry, and more for the Central Valley audiences over the course of 10 days. So it is a 10-day period of fun and exciting activities. I know my neighbor the other day, she is a dancer as part of the festival, she came over and gave me this schedule and encouraged me to, to come and watch her. So I know that there are community members in the neighborhood that participate, so it's very exciting to see that work that you guys have done and that you continue to do to provide these opportunities, not only for the residents of Fresno, but for the region in terms of the art and cultural aspect that you guys provide. I know that over the years, the festival has grown to have over 300 performances per year and selling around 10,000 tickets over the two weekends. That's very, very impressive. So thank you so much for the work that you guys have doing, and I know that this could only be run by passionate and volunteers predominantly, right? So we want to thank, thank all of you for committing to the arts and to making sure that we're highlighting the great work and the talent that exists here in Fresno and throughout our state and our regions. So I want to thank you guys for being here. Before we have the clerk read the proclamation proclaiming today Rogue Festival Day in the City of Fresno, I do want to allow Jennifer and then a few other board members just to give us a little bit more information and maybe some highlights.
Well, basically, the Rogue Festival, this is our 15th year, and we're very excited to present some amazing, talented people putting on incredible shows for the residents of Fresno as well as other areas around the state and country that come just to see the Rogue Festival, and I'm gonna hand it over to Barbara, who is our festival producer.
Thank you. We are so honored to be here, and thank you for wearing Rogue red. We love it. And to go with that, I have a sticker for you for Rogue, you can wear today to honor Rogue Day. It's been 15 years. The founder, Marcel Nunez, came here 15 years ago and was, had the same honor, so thank you for inviting us back again. We're honored to be here. The festival is three-folds in opportunities. It promotes our performers, whether it's your next-door neighbor, or we also bring in a lot of amazing talent from out of town, and then that then is an opportunity for the residents of the Fresno area to enjoy amazing, original art, whether it's all, all forms of dance and performing arts, theater, music, you name it, we have it, puppetry, magicians, it, the list goes on and on. It's, it's a smartest board, really, of any possible thing you could possibly want to see. Make sure you get your Rogue book. We've got our beautiful muse this year, and over 70 performers this year, which is, you're gonna find something you like, you're gonna find something that's gonna challenge you and make you think. Our artists really do work on original pieces that they come and perform for us. And then lastly, the opportunity to be a community. We are like a tribe of people who come together as volunteers to promote, you know, the community aspect, so. I'm gonna hand it over to Jonathan, who's gonna talk about the teaser show tonight.
A nice little microcosm of the festival happens this evening at the Tower Theater, so I know there's a lot going on tonight, but try to find an opportunity to come over and see the Rogue Festival we have to offer at the teaser show at the Tower Theater. and see the Rogue Festival we have to offer at the teaser show at the Tower Theater, starting at 7:00. But we're very honored to be here. Thank you for having us.
Anyone else?
Well, again, thank you so much for being here. Thank you for the commitment that you guys have in showcasing great art for our community. We know that art is very important and fundamental to quality of life and providing great experiences for not only residents but people that live here around that area that can come, and so I would encourage all the City of Fresno residents, I encourage my colleagues, the city staff, I know we have one of our own that participates and is a volunteer with the Rogue Festival, but really encourage folks to get out and come support the festival and support the small businesses in the Tower District that every year host this festival. So very proud to be representing the area, and thank you so much for your work. If you could, City Clerk, read the proclamation for the record.
Whereas the City of Fresno is the home of many talented and hard-working independent artists who create work that heal, uplift, challenge, and transform our community, and whereas independent artists create works in various media and styles that reflect a wide range of human experience and perspective, which is critical for the common good of our local, national, and international communities, and whereas independent artists play a role in shaping public attitudes and expanding understanding and communities to build bridges among people of all ages, races, genders, abilities, religions, and orientations, and whereas citizens of Fresno are joining with artists and audiences and supporters of the arts throughout the Central Valley to celebrate independent artists during the 15th Annual Rogue Festival being held in Fresno's Tower District from March 3rd to 12th, 2016. Now therefore be it resolved that we, Mayor, and the Council of the City of Fresno, do hereby recognize the mission of the Rogue Festival to showcase independent artists in our community and do proclaim March 3rd as Rogue Festival Day.
Congratulations. That's excellent. Hope to see you out there. Hey, don't be surprised. Thank you for being here, and thank you for making Fresno a greater place to be from and live in. So thank you very much. Well, that concludes our meeting for today, and thank everybody for being here and for your participation. Anything else we need to add, City Attorney? We're good. Thank you very much. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.